All right, I'd like to call this meeting to order. If everyone please rise, we have the invocation by Pastor PJ Beaver of Hope City Church. Thank you for coming tonight, sir.
Thank you for the opportunity. Hope City Church is just really thankful to be a part of this great community. And we're located on Bonita Beach Road, on the other side of 75, the east side in the Public Shopping Center. And this coming Sunday, we're actually celebrating four years of being a church here in Bonita, and we're just thrilled about that. So, thank you for the opportunity to come and pray. I invite you to pray with me. Lord Jesus, we thank you so much for this time. I ask that you would just guide these discussions tonight. Lord, we thank you for the opportunity to live in such a beautiful place. And we just thank you for our city's leaders, and just pray that you continue to give them wisdom and guide tonight's discussions. And we ask this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, thank you. All right, roll call, Mike.
Councilmember Bogaz.
Here.
Councilmember Carr.
Here.
Mayor Gibson.
Here.
Councilmember Corey.
Here.
Councilmember Folic.
Here.
Councilmember Fitzpatrick.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Purdon. Deputy Mayor Purdon, are you present remotely?
You hear me?
There we go.
Now we can.
I'm here. You hear me?
Yes.
Yep, thank you.
Here, listen.
Can I get a motion to allow Councilman Purdon?
I'll make a motion.
I got a motion and a...
Second.
Second, okay, roll call.
Councilmember Bogaz.
Aye.
Councilmember Carr.
Aye.
Mayor Gibson.
Aye.
Councilmember Corey.
Aye.
Councilmember Folic.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitzpatrick.
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, thank you. All right, so we have public comment on agenda items, not the zoning hearings. You'll have a chance for that, you know, when those items come up. So, right now, just any other public comment on agenda items other than the zoning. All right, seeing none, we'll move on to 6A. Mike?
6A, this is a transmittal hearing, an ordinance of the city of Bonita Springs, Florida, adopting an amendment to the Comprehensive Plan Future Land Use Map to designate 204.5-plus-or-minus acres from the city of Bonita Springs and Lee County Density Reduction Groundwater Resource, DRGR, Lee County Wetlands, and City of Bonita Springs Resource Protection Future Land Use Categories to the City of Bonita Springs Urban Fringe Community District and Resource Protection Future Land Use Categories, and to amend the text of the Urban Fringe Community District located on Lee County Strap Numbers
Standards, building standards, et cetera. So we do believe not only giving discretion to the city is important, but having this project developed to the higher standards in the city is also important. Bringing these lands into the city would ensure that the city gets the impact fees generated by the project which are north of $6 million. And would also allow the city, of course, to benefit from the tax base. Looking at the existing entitlements on the property, 37 acres of the site are zoned industrial as part of an industrial plan development in Lee County. That was to allow for really the entirety of this area, 30 acres of it, to be mined out for either lime rock or fill dirt blasting. Via dynamite is an approved use under the Lee County zoning in place. And it's been mined out partially, but that subsided. While Seagate has a arm of their business that does mining operations, they have not tried to seek out any additional permits to recommence mining, wanting to again develop this for residential uses and maintain those upland areas for a quality residential development as opposed to selling the dirt for mining purposes. Something that's also occurred over the course of this project, we started and filed with the county in 2021. Since filing, the state legislature has approved the Live Local Act, which is a state law mandating local governments to approve by right affordable housing on commercial and industrial zoned properties. So while this eastern portion is in the county, it is zoned industrial and it is eligible under the Live Local Act for up to 420 dwelling units per those codes if built to the different standards. So this is not any intent by Seagate Development. They are the opposite of an affordable housing developer, as you could see from the images I showed you. But it is important to note when you're framing this decision tonight that there are existing entitlements attached to this property that will run with the land if not brought into the city. Before I turn it over to Neil, just to frame up our request, and Mike did a great job of this. We are looking to again annex the entirety of it into the city. And this, tonight, is your application to change the future land use map to bring this property from Lee County DRG GR into the urban fringe community and resource protection categories. So our wetland areas would be maintained as resource protection. And the uplands where the development would occur would be the urban fringe community. The only other locations within your city that are urban fringe community are Valencia and Benita National. So that you can see the character of development that's allowed in this category. Mike noted text changes because we did have to go in and reduce the density within this category to fit our needs. Those communities, Valencia, Benita National, are developed at approximately 2.5 to 2.7 units per acre. Our proposed density is 1.4 units per acre or 299 units. So we actually went into the comp plan and did a reduction to allow a lower density permissible in this category. So this would allow again for 299 units. It's a density just below 1.5 units per acre. The key change that we're going to walk you through, something we heard at those last hearings and through further input from staff and stakeholders, is that commercial retail is something needed in eastern Benita. There's obviously a lot of activity happening at the I-75 interchange. There's a lot of rooftops even east of this site. And providing neighborhood serving, retail, commercial uses, and employment on this property would be a public enhancement that we should consider. So what we're bringing back to you tonight, we've increased the 39,500 square feet of retail that we had previously proposed and are proposing to increase that to 100,000 square feet. This would allow sufficient room for a neighborhood grocer, goods and services, as well as 20,000 square feet. Square feet of that would be office to provide local office space. I'm in the Waldrop Center just at the intersection of Benita Grand and Benita Beach Road. And I can tell you, our office has been full for many years. So we think there is demand in this area. Hopefully, we will be transmitted tonight. We are looking for your support in this. And we would come back to you at the second reading or adoption hearing with our planned development zoning where these commitments are fully formalized through the zoning action. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Neil to talk a little bit about DRGR history.
Good evening, for the record, Neil Montgomery. I'm going to talk to you tonight about the Lee County DRGR. And I'm going to tell you why I'm going to do that. Because the city's DRGR is identified in Policy 1.1.21. And the very last sentence in that policy says, "This policy doesn't apply to those annexed DRGR land that have not yet been assigned a City of Benita Springs' future land use category." Those lands, the ones in question, are subject to Policy 1.1.10.3. And if I look at that policy, it says, "Areas that have been annexed but have not been formally placed in a city future land use category will carry forward their existing or underlying unincorporated county future land use designation." So I know there's some folks that are worried about precedent. You know, what might this do in terms of a precedent for the city DRGR? The answer is nothing. It will have no impact on the city's category. And so the lawsuit that the city was in with the three happy or whatever hardworking guys, on the first page of that order, it says it applies to the city DRGR. So that order has absolutely no impact on this request and this DRGR. So if I look at the existing county, it's 1.4.5, which is the DRGR policy. It says that these are areas that apply, provides substantial recharge to aquifers most suitable for future well field development. Well, right there, that policy doesn't really apply to these properties. These properties are not the most suitable. And Mr. Brown will testify that the public wells are north of Keel Canal and therefore not hydrologically connected to this property. Another interesting factor about the county's DRGR is that only minimal public facilities exist or are programmed. Alexis is going to explain that there's a full range of public facilities available. So again, that policy doesn't really clearly apply and begs for a new category. And then it says, "New land uses in these areas that require rezoning, as we will, have to show that there's no impact adverse to groundwater or surface water." And again, you're going to hear from experts that that's the case. So under the current regulations, we're not creating a precedent. And there is a basis to change to future land use category. So then the question is, how did we get here? It's a good question. The answer to that is way back when, when Secretary Palam was the Secretary of DCA, there were rules in effect where you had to have a fairly tight straitjacket on population accommodation. And you had to reflect that on your map. And so Secretary Palam and the county got into a dispute that was resolved by coloring basically the undeveloped areas of the county DRGR. And interestingly enough, some of the property owners, Dewey Garzulo, Billy Don Grant, Cap Manley, you might know those people because they were the owners of Sessions 1, 2, and 3 that are now where most of these folks live. And they said to the commission, "Well, wait a minute. This area isn't for public water supply. We have consumption use permits. We're using all the water." And they said, "Yeah, we got to sign this, but you come back in and we'll fix it. It'll be easy." Well, they did come back in, but it wasn't easy. But we have sort of the same situation here. So anyway, so population accommodation, that rule, 9J5, doesn't exist anymore. When Governor Scott came in, in the midst of the recession, that was eliminated. The other thing is, they called it groundwater resource because at the time, the county staffs admitted, "Well, we don't know where our future water is going to come from. So we're just going to call anything that's not developed groundwater resource." Well, the legislator fixed that. And what they did was said, "Okay, local governments aren't really suited to do that. So we're going to empower the Water Management District to come up with water supply plans. And they're going to tell you where your future water supply is coming from. And then we're going to make the local governments adopt those plans into your comp plan." So you've done that. You have the Lower West Coast Water Supply Plan adopted into your comp plan. So you know where your water is coming from. And the district is going to continue to help you with that. So what you see before you is the map that the county adopted based on the settlement agreement with the Department of Community Affairs. And you will see Sections 1, 2, and 3. And this property were put by the county into the DRGR. What you see in this map is that the property south of Benita Beach Road, in exactly the same category as this property is, that did get fixed. And those are the communities we have today. And those are the future land use categories that you have for those properties now. I will say this, I was also involved in that plan amendment because the county changes to rural. And during the first administration, when Paul Pass was the mayor, we worked on getting these categories approved. And those properties actually were more sensitive, way more sensitive in terms of surface water, groundwater, and wildlife than the property in question. So clearly, development can be accommodated in this area. And there is a good reason for it to be. What has Lee County done with the Lee County DRGR? Well, this map shows you areas that the county has allowed development through different mechanisms. There's what they call the environmental overlay areas. There's mixed use residential subdivisions. There's vested communities. There's a variety of different mechanisms that have been used to do that, those changes. And each one of those, they have required intensive modeling and analysis of the groundwater to make sure there's no adverse impact. And I would say this, that Mr. Brown has been involved in a lot of those. And he can tell you that's not an easily modeling process. It's not here. We love this. It's here and make these changes and continue to drill down to make sure everybody's totally comfortable that we are not going to create an adverse water quality or water quantity impact. And with that, I'm going to turn it back over to Alexis.
All right, so touching on that point, I think it is important to talk about the precedent, talk about DRGR. This is Lee County DRGR. And we are very distinct from Benita Springs' established DRGR area. This is an excerpt of your future land use map. We are the only property on the abutting Benita Beach Road east of Benita Grand that is in DRGR. The fire station is east, but it does not abut Benita Grand Road. The traditional large area of contiguous DRGR, if you can see my arrow, is this large swath of land to the west of Benita Grand Drive. This is the established area of, within the city of DRGR. We are the only parcel abutting this arterial roadway with water sewer, the infrastructure that we'll talk about today, that is within the Lee County DRGR, but also within the city. So that does make us distinctively unique from other petitions you've heard before. And also distinct in that we have the urban levels of infrastructure at our front door to tie into and connect to, to make efficient use of that investment in public infrastructure that has occurred along the roadway. So this is just looking at it a little bit closer where you can see the black line is the city boundary. And our property, this is under contract as part of the project on the far eastern boundary that is entirely isolated from the rest of the city's established DRGR area. Neil noted that Lee County has permitted development to occur in DRGR. In fact, significant amounts, you saw 22,000 homes are developed or under development or permitted within DRGR since about 2014. So over the last 10 years, all that development has been approved through different mechanisms. This remaining area that we're looking at from Benita Grand Drive at the racetrack, and if you move towards our property, that is all Lee County land. We are the only incorporated piece, again, on the north side of Benita Beach Road in this area. So what is planned or known about this area? We've got, the first area is the racetrack gas station, developed under a Lee County Development Order permit in place for many years now. So we know where that intersection is taken. Solis Grand is a townhome project zoned under Lee County standards, developed, being under development under a development order that's approved for bonus density at 14 units per acre, 157 townhomes on 11.2 acres within, again, Lee County. That is the site plan. And you obviously can pacify the site and see it under development. As you move further east, there is a pending commercial plan development of about 10 acres in size. Further east of that, you have the Saldivar migrant housing property, which I would presume at some point will be redeveloped due to just the high value of that property considering everything that's occurring around it. You've got the Sanctuary RV Resort further east of that. And then between our property and the RV Resort, there's really just a few water management ponds that were developed for the roadway and some light industrial type uses. So this area heavily impacted. It's all within Lee County. And most of it is either currently developed, pending development, or under construction for development. So I would submit to you, the character of the northern side of Benita Beach Road within Lee County is not rural in nature and is not, no longer consistent with a DRGR vision. Also of importance, I think the city has been very strong in trying to protect their large area of DRGR to the west of Benita Beach Road, for good reason. They want to have green space within the city. They feel there is some merits to the water management that occurs. The good news is, there has been very active public acquisition in this specific area surrounding this property. And it's all spoken for, as you can see, to the north, to the east. That's all shaded green. It's under ownership by either the Water Management District, Lee County, other public entities. So no development will occur in those areas. It's under conservation easement. Really, all you're looking at here is this last swath of impacted lands, most of it being in Lee County with this property just kind of bisected by both Lee and the city. Looking at infrastructure, again, this allows us to be very distinct from other applications you've seen in the DRGR future land use category. This site has extensive frontage on a four-lane arterial roadway maintained by Lee County, Benita Beach Road. We are also very proximate to I-75 as well as the Logan Boulevard extension, which is a regional thoroughfare bringing trips up north to Benita. There are water lines, urban-sized water lines, 12 to 16 inches in size, as well as sewer lines that the site can readily connect to. We did get our letter of availability from Benita Springs Utilities indicating capacity to serve the proposed commercial uses as well as the residential uses. We have a water plant in close proximity, fire EMS station. And so well-served in this area by existing infrastructure put in place to serve the areas along Benita Beach Road to the south of us. So again, our proposal is to move the uplands of the property into the urban fringe community and maintain our preserved wetland areas in the resource protection. And that would place them in conservation easements in perpetuity, along with the text amendments to ensure that the density is capped at the 1.4 units per acre or 299 units. In terms of the evolution of this case, I felt it was prudent to kind of talk about how far we've come down this road to demonstrate our willingness to make this work as a city project. Again, we started this project as a joint venture between Barron Collier and Seagate Back. They engaged us in 2020. We filed in 2021. And we filed for 585 dwelling units, which would be a mix of multifamily. The intent was apartments on the west side of the site and single family, lower density, single family on the east side to provide transition as you move towards those state-owned lands to our east. After working through that application, we could see that the densities were not favorable to staff. And we went back in with a modified proposal, reducing it down to 388 dwelling units. And then incorporating the commercial component, understanding that was of need and demand in the community. We felt a viable use at the time was mini warehouse. When we appeared, I believe before this board previously as well, they indicated, "That's not a job generator. We've got enough of that in east Benita." And so we further tweaked the application to remove that and bring in more meaningful commercial retail to serve the area. In 2024, after our LPA hearing, we reduced the density once again down to 299 units, which is where we're at today. And then further worked over the last course of the last year to increase that commercial, remove uses that wouldn't be acceptable to the area and really try to hone in on neighborhood serving uses that could complement the area. This is our unleashing version of the master concept plan. This would fall with our zoning application that you would see at your next hearing following state review of this amendment. I'll just walk you through the proposed concept here. We have two points of ingress egress from Benita Beach Road. The western is aligned with the access to Palmira. Make sure you can see my arrow here. And the eastern is where we would have access to the residential. But also, these orange areas are our proposed commercial areas. That's about seven and a half acres. So we eliminated what was going to be a really grand entryway and was able to incorporate more commercial into this to fit really a shopping center plaza-type concept in order to serve the neighborhood. What I hope you also notice along the roadway, in addition to our buffers, are these large preserve areas that just so happened that the high-quality vegetation was abutting Benita Beach Road. So we were able to incorporate this as our preserve area to meet and exceed the local requirements and also provide about 1,200 foot of just straight vegetation off the roadway. So certainly, these vary in width. These are about 200 to 150 feet in width in this location. But providing native vegetation along the road that can screen views of the proposed homes. The residential uses are shown in the yellow and purple. The purple would have the ability to be an attached product. This would not be multifamily or higher density or apartment housing. These would be coach home style units. But the vast majority is in the yellow. And those would be single-family detached dwelling types. So the vast majority, again, a lower-density product type. The pink area is our amenity site. That's about eight acres. The intent there is to provide onsite recreational amenities for our residents. Obviously, with a higher-end community, you need to provide those within the project and also just help facilitate having places for people to stay within the community to enjoy the amenities. You'll notice an interconnected lake system. And Jackie LaRocque is going to talk to you about the water management system design and how this meets and exceeds the city's requirements. Something of note is our green space track along the northern end of the canal. This was intentionally done to have pervious area. So if there's hurricane events or storm events where there's overflow of the canal, there is green space for the water to percolate through the soil instead of hitting development tracks and moving quickly through the property. Something we've worked into the petition is maintenance of the canal. I think a lot of the issues stemming from really Irma was the hurricane that really impacted this area most significantly. And that was due to lack of maintenance of some of these government-maintained canals. And so as part of our zoning application, we are proposing to maintain this stretch of canal as the owner to remove branches, debris, keep that so the water can flow freely through the canal and not be impeded. And then you can see perimeter ruffers as well to provide adequate screening from either state preserve lands or kind of light industrial uses to the west of us. I will note, due to our increase in commercial, we have triggered the need for a signal at our eastern entrance. In our community meetings, certainly not everyone was positive. But those who attended did express support for having a signal at that location that will help ease ingress egress out of Palmira as well or the San Remo easternmost access to that property. So we also see that as an enhancement of what you saw last time. And Yuri Bykow will talk about that in greater detail. These next images are just, we spent the time to render out what the building footprints could accommodate. This is a view of the property if you are on Benita Beach Road looking north into the property, north, northeast. This is the smaller of the two commercial tracks on the west side of that entry road. And this can accommodate a sizable commercial plaza with, again, good services. I'll touch on the next slide, the use limitations. But good services, retail, restaurants, et cetera. This is a view if you are entering the property looking east at that easternmost commercial track. That's the larger of the two. This is where we can accommodate a 40,000-square-foot grocery store footprint that we've located on the master concept plan, as well as some coffee, quick-serve restaurant pads out in the front of that structure. So additional conditions and commitments that we've worked into the companion PD through this process. Both at the community meetings as well as working through staff, they wanted to eliminate any uses that would not be aesthetically pleasing. That's not really in line with the vision of Benita Beach Road or what the communities wanted to see. So no car wash, no gas stations on the schedule of uses. We took out the mini warehouse. And so limiting those to what we believe would be truly neighborhood-serving uses that will prevent people from having to go an additional mile and a half to get to the Publix to the east of Benita Grand. We understand that having those commercial uses permitted in the first phase of development and committed to through the development order process in addition to the zoning is something also important to the city. So having that upfront in our development order was also something we're working through with staff in terms of conditions. We are reserving public parking spaces to provide access to public hiking trails that are nearby in the Keel or Crew Flint, Crew Flint Pen Strand areas, as well as a future trail along our northern boundary. I mentioned the Keel Canal Maintenance and Expanded Open Space Area. We do have 55% of the site committed in open space, which exceeds your RPD standards. And then we've also included a location on the commercial parcel for a monopole wireless cell phone tower. We understand cell service is poor on the east end of Benita Beach Road. And so providing the monopole, which is the smaller of the wireless tower structures to serve the area, was something that would be of interest to the city. So we, while Seagate doesn't develop cell phone towers, they have certainly reserved a 30 by 30 area of their site in the northern portion to accommodate a tower through the PD process. So with that context, I'm going to hand it over to the other experts to talk through their specific areas. And first will be Christian Casey with the environmental specs.
Christian Casey, environmental consultant with Atwell. The existing site consists primarily of disturbed land, pine flatwoods, and low-quality wetlands that have been invaded by exotics. Majority of the site has been disturbed by agricultural, mining, and residential activities. Development plan was designed to preserve the highest-quality wetlands along the western portion of the property and Benita Beach Road while impacting previously disturbed portions of the site. A protected species survey was conducted throughout the site. During the survey, no species listed by either Florida Fish and Wildlife Commission or the United States Fish and Wildlife Service were observed. To identify if Florida bonneted bats were utilizing the site for nesting and foraging, an acoustic survey was conducted. The survey concluded that no bats were utilizing this property, no bonneted bats were utilizing this property. All wildlife surveys conducted concluded listed species were not utilizing the property. South Florida Water Management District has extensively reviewed the proposed development footprint and has issued an ERP permit. This project has met all preservation and protected species criteria for this permit. The site is improved consistent with the ERP, and the current exotic vegetation is removed. Exotic vegetative impacts through seed dispersal will be minimized to off-site properties, including the neighboring government preserve.
Good evening. Jackie LaRocque with Atwell. Professional engineer, and let's talk about stormwater and utilities today. So as Alexis said, this project is a little different. We are on an arterial road. We have a 12-inch, I'm sorry, we have a 16-inch water main on the south side of Benita Beach Road. It ranges from 12 to 16 inches. We have a 16-inch sewer line along the Benita Beach Road as well. So we're not extending utilities to get to the project. They're already there. We have been in contact with BSU. And we do, they do have capacity, as Alexis said, to serve the community. We're less than two miles from the fire station. And the infrastructure that's needed for the project is already in place. Stormwater, as was previously mentioned by Alexis, everything is interconnected. So rainfall comes, a storm event comes. We have a perimeter berm around the site that keeps our water on our site. It's directed to our water management lakes. It's treated, it's attenuated, and it's held back. It's released north to the Keel Canal. There's one more arrow. Yep. And, but it's released at a controlled rate. And that's the math that I do. That's the math that my team does. We run extensive modeling. What's interesting about the city of Benita Springs is we work, we've already worked with you guys on this. We have your water management model. And the modeling that you guys do, your master model for the city, is to a higher standard than Lee County, than to the South Florida Water Management. The Irma storm is already built into your model, so those peak stages are what we model against. And that was a natural disaster. Like, that was a storm that was in there, but the city of Benita Springs took that data, put it into the master model, and now people design against that. So a couple of things that are different is you guys have higher water quality regulations in Lee County. So where in Lee County you can do a hundred percent water quality, you guys require a hundred and fifty percent. So this, this project is already designed to a higher standard than would be had it been designed with Lee County. As was previously mentioned, Seagate has taken the time and the investment to go ahead and get the water management permit because water management is a critical aspect on any job, especially in this area. And so the work is done. The design is done. The state has already approved it. And so I'm able to stand up here before you and say, we have that, that aspect of it done. Usually what I have to say is, we'll do that at the time of DO. We'll do that at the time of DO. But I can say today, no, that is done. The water management design for this project is complete. And we'll pass it to David.
Good evening. I'm David Brown. I'm a professional geologist, and I'm the National Practice Lead in hydrogeology for my company, Respec. And today I'm going to walk through some of the ground and surface water resources of the subject property. But to do that, I've got to go back in time, and we have to kind of characterize the property as it was so that we can fully understand what it has become. In historical context, the project site contained hydroic flatwoods and cypress communities with these higher elevation islands, that's my term, kind of raised areas of well-drained soils. These so-called islands, as I've characterized them, are prehistoric coastal dune deposits that were formed roughly parallel to the coastline, and they overlay a nearly level depositional marine terrace. Over time, these relic dunes have eroded and reduced in size and become elongated and rounded-shaped and are characterized now by pine flatwoods with the lower elevation marine terrace surrounding them evolving into wetlands, hydroic flatwoods, and cypress. These historic landforms also influence surface water flow patterns in the southern DRGR, which basically flows from north to south. This property, though, it's been highly, highly disturbed. So let me show you a picture of what this looks like. This is a nineteen fifty-eight aerial image, black and white image. I've superimposed a yellow horizontal line where Benita Beach Road occurs. You can see there's nothing on this that's been developed, basically. And there's a little black square in the image that I have to the left, and I've blown that up to the right so you can get a good idea of what these dune deposits look like. And you can see these elongated relic dune features. And surrounding those, you can see kind of a dark line that surrounds it. That's kind of the transitional zone. And it's somewhat hard to see, but hopefully you can see it on your screen. There's all this stippled pattern in between that. Those are the wetland areas where you have all that increased vegetation. I've superimposed blue arrows to show how water flow would flow around these features, basically in and around, but generally from north to south. However, disturbance of the project site began with the excavation of the Keel Canal, which came in the early nineteen sixties, which borders the site along its northern border. And the construction of the canal, which was used to facilitate drainage of this entire area to the west, to the Imperial River, completely isolated this parcel and cut it off from the balance of the DRGR lands to the north and the crew lands to the north. But that's not all that's happened to this property. This is a two thousand and seven image of some of the mining that has occurred on site. So the future land use map doesn't really recognize the significant hydrologic alterations that have occurred on the site, not only to the Keel Canal, but the onsite disturbances from the mining operations, okay? You had two limestone mining pits that were talked about a little bit earlier. One's about twenty-seven acres in size. The other one's about eleven acres, composing about twenty percent, nineteen percent of the project site. And if you look at that aerial, you can see how disturbed it was. In the mining area to the east, they completely, and I've been all over this property, they've completely stripped all the superficial soils off of it. So there's no soil holding capacity. There's no ability to hold that water and to allow recharge. Highly disturbed. It's bermed and dyked all around it. So you've created these artificial sub-basins within this property for stagnant water just to sit there and cause issues with water quality. So these areas are not only dyke, they have multiple debris piles that are there to the west of the larger pit. So again, it is a very, very disturbed piece of property. What are we going to do about that? How can we improve it? And like Neil said, I've been involved in over the improvement of hydrologic conditions of thousands of acres in Lee County's DRGR, and we want to apply those same methodologies to this parcel. Goal number one is to obtain detailed surface water quality data, to ascertain existing pre-development, pre-residential development conditions, which then will be used to monitor the site through construction and through operation and management of the engineered stormwater system. And we can use this data as a means of auditing the performance. We've done this over and over north of this project to look at how well we are doing. Some of the stuff that we're going to be looking at, depth of water, but a really important one is dissolved oxygen, DO. The Imperial River is impaired for DO, and properties like this contribute to that impairment from stagnant water that is impounded and held back because it's so disturbed. Also going to be looking at turbidity, specific inductants, nitrogen species, phosphorus chloride, nitrate, and a very important one, biological oxygen demand. Another goal that we're going to do, talked about with the stormwater management system. We're going to be routing this treated stormwater into and through these historic mining pits. Allow this property to breathe again, to get some sort of flow through it, okay? This approach takes advantage also of the excavation storage capabilities, these mine pits. And we can, since they penetrate below land surface, we can actually enhance recharge by routing water to these features, to the underlying water table offer. Another goal. Proposed stormwater management system will also, there's distributed ponds, if you looked at. So we'll, they'll have multiple stormwater treatment facilities. This also increases recharge potential to the site, okay? And again, helps with that mixing and flow through the property, and again, adds another level of water quality treatment before that water enters the Keel Canal. Goal number four. We're going to use these stormwater lakes, and they give us a great opportunity for stormwater capture and reuse for irrigation, okay? So we can recycle that stormwater on site. Again, additional mixing as we go along. Surface water supplies would only be augmented with groundwater on rare occasions, okay? We have to do it. So the conjunctive use of using these two sources, not relying on a single source, actually helps protect both sources. Another aspect that we've incorporated into the DRGR north of this property. Talked a little bit about the vegetation that's on site. The proposed removal of these nuisance and exotic vegetation species will help with the restoration of the project site hydrology and ecological function. There's vegetative damming all over this property. It's full of all these nuisance and exotics. We talked about the Keel Canal has issues. All of those features contribute to stagnant water and low DO and poor water quality. Goal number six, when we do irrigate, we're going to have a master-controlled irrigation system, okay? So no individual homeowner can turn on the sprinklers or increase the duration. That adds to the conservation of these water resources here on site. And goal number seven, we've put together all of this into an advanced lake management plan, okay? That is designed to increase safeguards to the water resources of the DRG area and also protect the city's potable supply wellfield, which is located, as Neil said, north of the Keel Canal to the northwest of the property. So in conclusion, and look at that aerial image right there, two thousand and nine. Significant hydrologic isolation and alteration of the site. Mining-related activities have increased the disturbance through the removal of soil and the disconnection of historic surface water flow paths that occurred on the property. This has reduced recharge potential, and that, those conditions favor this invasive vegetation. And again, as I said, have potentially contributed to the impairment of the Imperial River through low DO. Clearly, the site does not exhibit resource characteristics worthy of a DRGR designation. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Good evening. For the record, Yuri Baikow with TR Transportation Consultants. I'm a licensed professional engineer of the state of Florida, and I'll go over some of the transportation aspects and impacts of this request in front of you today. So the first point we want to emphasize, we have reduced our unit count down from three hundred eighty-eight units down to two ninety-nine since our LPA hearing in two thousand and twenty-four. So again, a significant reduction in residential units and residential potential traffic on the site. In terms of access, we're proposing two access points to this project off Benita Beach Road in order to spread out the trips and to ensure that project is not concentrated at a single location or a single access point. Since our last time in front of you, we've also increased the neighborhood commercial uses to reduce the vehicles from traveling west on Benita Beach Road. And so by providing commercial opportunity for goods and services in closer proximity to residential, what that does, it reduces the vehicles' miles traveled on the surrounding roadway network. And as a result of this increase in commercial, we now also anticipate that a traffic signal will be triggered at our eastern driveway on Benita Beach Road, which will not only benefit this project, but also the communities on the south side of Benita Beach Road, which consist of Palmira and Sorrento communities. So a big benefit there. We also prepared a traffic impact statement for this application, which was done this year. Before we prepared our traffic study, we met with the city's traffic consultants to ensure that our traffic study will satisfy the guidelines that are adopted by the city of Benita Springs. When that was approved, then we begin our traffic study analysis. The data we've used in our traffic analysis was obtained from the latest city's traffic count reports, which includes peak season traffic data. So I know a lot of questions come, well, did you do a traffic analysis in peak season? And we have because we utilized the peak season traffic data that's published by the city of Benita Springs. We also included any vested developments in the area which are approved, but yet build developments and their traffic volumes in our analysis, and that was also provided to us by the city of Benita Springs. Then we prepared our typical capacity or level of service analysis in the surrounding roadways. And the results indicate that this proposed amendment will not cause any roadways to operate below their adopted level of service standards. More specifically, the adjacent segment of Benita Beach Road is shown to operate with sufficient capacity. Now, this doesn't mean that this is all the traffic analysis we'll be doing for this project, and if it's approved, it gets developed. That's not the case. We still have to provide future traffic studies, future signal warrant analysis with a development order if the rezoning in this application is approved. At that time, we will get into nitty-gritty details regarding operational improvements, safety improvements, and internal improvements or signalization that will be required at that time. And if that future traffic study deems any mitigations will be required by this project, then the developer will be fully responsible for providing those improvements on top of the approximately five million dollars in road impact fees that will be required to be paid by this project to offset and mitigate offsite roadway impacts. So a significant fee there, as you can see. The next topic I'm going to talk about is the funded I-75 widening project from Golden Gate Parkway to Course Crew Road. And before I get into that, I want to emphasize that this widening project is very much alive despite some rumors within community that this project is postponed or canceled. We've actually reached out to Lee County MPO, and they mentioned that this project is still moving forward. It is not canceled, and it's not indefinitely delayed. And FDOT's five-year work program still shows the funding for this project. So I want to make sure that's on the record before I continue my presentation. So again, the project we're talking about here is I-75 widening from Golden Gate Parkway to Course Crew Road, which will widen the interstate from six lanes to eight lanes. And in some sections, it will appear as ten lanes because it includes those auxiliary lanes that help traffic move on and off the interchanges. And why is this important to this project and to overall area? Well, a lot of the delays that currently occur during specific hours or moments of the day along the Benita Beach Road corridor is you do the traffic, daily commuter traffic that gets backed up on I-75. So that traffic backs up on I-75, it spills onto the ramps, and from the ramps, that affects the traffic flow along the corridors, and in this case, Benita Beach Road. So with this improvement, that will help, definitely help alleviate that situation by providing additional capacity as well as doing some ramp improvements. Some other benefits that you see on your right side of the screen on the bottom here is that additional lanes will reduce travel times by approximately forty-seven percent. It will enhance safety. It increases efficiency of traffic operations, including traffic signals and interchanges. And very importantly, it reduces the travel times in event of emergency situations. So those are some of the benefits that FDOT provided as part of this project. The next slide in green shows you here where the widening will occur. North is to your right, so from point number two and number six here, it will be widened. And here, this slide kind of shows the cross-sections of each section that's going to be widened. So from, on the left side of the screen, from two and four, it will be widened from six lanes to eight lanes. And then from Immaculate Road to Course Crew Road, or from number four and six, it will be widened from six lanes to ten lanes. And again, that includes those auxiliary lanes that I've talked to you about before. And here's kind of the latest timing that was provided by FDOT during the last public meeting. The first section or the first phase that we widened will be from Immaculate Road to just south of Benita Beach Road. It's shown here in teal color on this map, and that's anticipated to start for construction in two thousand and twenty-seven. The next segment is from Benita Beach Road to Course Crew Road, and that's shown in yellow here, and that's anticipated to start in two thousand and twenty-nine. And then the remaining segments are in Southern Collier County, which will start in two thousand and thirty and two thousand and thirty-one. And why is this important for our project? Well, it's not like our project is going to be built tomorrow and start generating traffic and adding traffic to the surrounding roadways. We still have to go through this process. We still have to go through zoning approval. We still have to go through development approval, at which we'll prepare another traffic study for this application. Then you have site clearing, infrastructure, building permits, and construction of homes. And finally, people are able to move in into this community. So the soonest we anticipate people living in this community, if everything goes perfect, which is hard these days, there's a lot of permits you have to go through, will be two thousand and twenty-eight, two thousand and twenty-nine. And by that time, a lot of I-75 improvements will be well underway or even maybe even completed in some sections. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your patience. We'll, I'll just be wrapping us up. And I will say, I experienced that. I said I have the office behind Publix at Benita Grand and Benita Beach Road, and I travel the road frequently, and I think the acute problem we're seeing, and we're about to get into season again, is the on-ramp congestion that's occurring. So I do know Benita Beach Road in its entirety is not perfect, but it will operate and accept a level of service. And a lot of the problem that occurs during peak hours is going to be resolved by the state through this project. So just to conclude, this project will be compatible with the development on the south side of Benita Beach Road. We are proposing a future land use category with one point four units per acre at that lowest range is what we're committing to. That will be much lower density than the six units per acre approved on the south side of the road. This will be done as a high-end community, and we've incorporated neighborhood-serving retail uses and eliminated any harsh commercial uses that would detract from the community. And also, it will be extremely well-screened by our strategic preserve locations along the roadway. We've incorporated public enhancements, not only the commercial component, public access to trail systems, the wireless cellphone tower component we've mentioned, et cetera. Environmental enhancements, as David and Casey well note, Christian Casey well noted, the site has been significantly degraded. We'll come in, we'll be able to restore some of these invaded preserve areas, bring them back to a better state, improve the water quality and service enhancement. Also note, I know there were speakers at the LPA that were very concerned about wildlife and wildlife protection. And just like the traffic study has to be redone again and again throughout the process, we did, we did the environmental study with the zoning. We must do one again for the city at the time of development order. So these things are ongoing. We don't put a shovel in the ground until we've re-verified that there aren't gopher that there aren't gopher, tortoise, or other protected species on site. We've also noted the improvements to the Keel Canal as well as the design that will allow for better water management and better water quality because of the great leadership of the city. You have higher standards. We want to be in the city. We want to build to those standards. And I think, again, due to the, the great leadership in the city, local control, keeping the money here to be spent by you all is important. Again, 90 acres are in Lee County. We submit that providing this project to the city, allowing the impact fees to stay in the city, allowing the tax base to stay in the city will be a great asset to the community. And just the last item to leave you with, I think it is an issue for some is, is this concept of protecting DRGR. This project does not have to be a precedent for changing city DRGR. Your DRGR is well-protected. It's contiguous on the west side of Benita Grand. We are county DRGR and the only DRGR on the north side of the road with a completely different context in terms of infrastructure and site characteristics as well as surrounding development patterns. So thank you very much for your attention and time and we're happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Do we want to go to public comment or do we want to do questions first?
That's what they have to say.
Okay. And does anybody want a break? Because I'd rather not stop public comment for a break. So if you want, right, we'll, we'll do a, we'll do a quick 10-minute break and then we'll do the public comment.